I like to call the meeting to order and always say it's great to have the very fine school board with a very fine city council meeting together, joint meeting. I find that always informative. And it's always the five-year financial forecast, something that we all enjoy so much. And anyway, we do look forward to the presentation. I, you know, I hope you all know David Bradley is the new guy in charge over there. Catherine has moved on to another position where David's been by Catherine's hip for many, many years and we won't miss a beat there. And Farrell, it's always good to see you and you all are in charge, so we welcome you. And folks, I'm going to suggest any questions, make a note, we'll ask me the concluding part of this, please.
Mayor, thank you, School Board, City Council. First, I just want to thank the staff. There's a lot of people that put work into this over the last couple of months. It was a great effort between us and the school board. We've met a couple of times, had a lot of good discussions and, you know, it's good to be at this point. You know, it's an exciting time of year in the budget office and I usually hate to use the word exciting and budget in the same sentence because that's not a great icebreaker when you're trying to make friends. But, you know, we've done a lot of neat stuff to get to this point. In August and September, we really look at revenues and we get into all kinds of details with it. So we're looking at sales tax and trying to figure out if the fuel savings that have impacted sales tax, how much used car inventory is impacting personal property, how much rain, we actually get in this conversation, may have hit some big weekends in the summer that could have impacted hotel tax. So there's a lot of due diligence that gets us to this point. And then we open up the system, you know, we're at that point where now the departments are entering their data and doing their thing. And one of the neat things we do, and you'll see that, I think, incorporated into this forecast, is every year the city manager chairs this working group. We invite professors from Old Dominion, the economic professors like Dr. Agarwal. We usually get the economists from the Federal Reserve Bank in Richmond. And we have a roundtable. We invite all the cities to come and participate. It's usually after the state or the region report, so we get to have some questions and answers. And finally, this is an important point of the year because we get to engage you guys and tell you what's going ahead and start getting you thinking about fiscal year 18 and beyond. So here's our agenda for today. I'm going to cover the first couple of points. Talk a little bit about local economy and Farrell's going to get into some of our projections. One of the things I just mentioned, to me, forecasting is kind of like a hurricane projection model. You know how five days, the cone of uncertainty goes out? It's similar to that with the five-year forecast to me. We know that over five years, there's going to be changes. And that's why we like to incorporate sensitivity analysis, to change our assumptions. If one changes, how does that impact the whole forecast? So you're going to see some of that in there, but let's get started. Seventy percent of GDP is consumer spending. So that's one of the things that I wanted to start off with. And you can see here, we're doing pretty well from the standpoint of consumer revenue. One of the interesting things about these revenue sources, these to me are what you'd call leading indicators. In 2008, when the economy was starting to falter, these things were taking a dive long before there was a declared recession. So this is something we look at closely. Unemployment rate, we're doing better. You can see from the Great Recession, it's gone down. One of the things that Dr. Agarwal and the Old Dominion professors mentioned, there are people that have gotten frustrated in the labor market. Jobs have not recovered as much, so some of the unemployment rate is because people are not, have not been able to find jobs in their scourge. Some people left the workforce because they may have retired. But overall, this is a pretty good trend. One of the things, and you'll see this in the report we did, got this from Old Dominion, this just shows total jobs restored during the recession. And you can see that Hampton Roads has not done as well as the state or the United States. But I do think this is an opportunity for our economic development efforts as well. So, you know, replacing jobs, there's some opportunity and maybe we could get some good companies here. Housing, at the peak of the recession, 28% of the homes were short sales. And they were selling about 15% less than what their value was. And that was dragging down real estate. Real estate is our number-one revenue source. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But it's doing better. Short sales are now about 11%. Old Dominion pointed out, we don't know how many more foreclosures are in the pipeline, so that's an issue of something we're going to have to monitor. Tourism, another important part of our economy, it's doing really well. If you saw that first graph, about 4.6% during the recovery. One of the interesting things is what we're doing well on is the average daily rate is increasing. So what people pay for their room has gone up. As a matter of fact, I think the average person that's coming here, average family makes about $109,000 and that's been going up and increasing. What we're not doing as well on is you can see the blue line on demand. There's opportunity for growth in the hotel market. And if you remember, Council Brad Van Damke came in September and he talked about some changes and we included that. I think you adopted ordinance in the way we're going to do, excuse me, do the tip and tap fund. So there's opportunity out there that he's working on. Military earnings as a percentage of total earnings, this is an interesting graph to me because it starts in 1969 and goes basically to today. And you can see as a proportion of total earnings, it's gone down from 54% to basically 15%. Kind of makes sense. I mean, Virginia Beach was a much smaller city in 1969. But what was interesting about it and something Dr. Agarwal mentioned, is that the military makes twice as much money as a private sector job. And over the last three or four years, military spending is decreasing or basically flat over the last few years. So if we lose military jobs, it's going to take two private sector jobs to replace them. Another economic development opportunity. Want to talk a little bit about income, per capita income? This is the one that includes all benefits. So you can see, we picked 2002 going forward. It's grown at a nominal rate of about 3.5%. In real terms, it's growing about 1.1% a year. And when we say real, that's adjusted for inflation. So that one's doing okay, but it includes benefits like health insurance and retirement. If you look at median household income, and we could take this all the way back to 2002 as well, in real terms, this has been declining about half of a percent a year. And I want to point this out because this is what I kind of call mathematically the great squeeze that's been hitting families and governments. So taking that to our city budget, you can see since 2005, our budget in real terms, the green line, has grown about 0.6% a year. But if you look at it from fiscal year 10 downward, it actually decreased in real terms, adjusted for inflation, by 1% a year. So this has been the struggle, I know city council and school board has had balance in the budget. But during the same period, we've won numerous awards, we've kept our AAA bond rating, so we've kept moving forward. So and the survey from citizens seem to say we're doing well. Tax burdening, so if you take that per capita expenditures and per capita income and you take the median household income and you compare it to these things, we do well when you look at what we're charging our citizens compared to the region. We are the lowest when we look at those two types of tax burden. So that's a positive thing for the economy. So let's talk a little bit about revenues. We've shown this graph before. Real estate is the most important local revenue that we have as far as amount. Forty-five percent of the general fund comes from real estate taxes. And let me point out, the revenue that we're getting ready to do is all going to be general fund because that impacts not only the city but schools through the revenue sharing formula. But when we get to state and federal revenue, we're going to combine them. So what this shows is over time, roughly, we think, based on this economist's theory, that real estate grows about 3.35% a year. Our blue line shows how it's actually grown for the city. It's interesting that we've kind of come to the same point over time, but we had the big run-up in assessments and then we had five years of consecutive assessment decrease. So it's been a big impact. Right now, we feel pretty good about real estate taxes. We talked about the short sales are decreasing. We have it growing 3% a year in this year and then 3% going forward, and that's based on Jerry Banigan, our real estate assessor's forecast. For us, that was a huge impact as we look ahead to fiscal year 18. We're expecting $16 million in new real estate taxes going forward. Personal property, and you can see, we're doing this on all the graphs, the budget is blue line actual. This is what we get from, you know, vehicles, boats, those type of things. We've been having a little trouble meeting this and estimating this thing correctly. Part of the issue, we are estimating this in the fiscal year 18, 80% of it has not even come in this year yet. So always kind of two years behind. But we actually finally are on the right side of this. You know, we're actually going to get more in, we got more in '16 than we thought we would get. In '17, we think we're going to do a little better. So this is a source that's doing better. We think about $9 million more going into fiscal year 18. Between all of these revenue sources just for the general fund, we're at about $30 million at this point in the process compared to $16 million last year. So that's why you're going to see a more optimistic forecast. Consumer spending, I didn't want to do all of these separately. Just know that these are the ones I kind of started with. They're all doing well. We think they're going to do well over the forecast. If anything, we're probably a little conservative on them, you know, knowing that maybe there could be a recession at some point. General sales did really good in '16, 5% growth. We think some of that is because of the fuel savings that have occurred. So, you know, that one's doing well. B-pole, there's some new businesses that are coming to Virginia Beach. They're in the two-year exemption program. We think as those come out that that will continue to do well. Restaurant was the only revenue that did not decline during the recession. So maybe that's a compliment to all the good restaurants we have. That did well. We talked about hotel tax earlier. State, city side, we're not as optimistic going forward in the next year or two. Human services has already been told that the state human services department has to take a 5% cut. I think the state, the schools have about 1% growth for year two, then increasing going forward. School revenues, there's been a over half a billion dollar cut over the last few years as Farrell pointed out to me. This has impacted the schools from a revenue standpoint, a loss of positions, and really, it's kind of shifted the city funding and state funding where the city funding with our revenue sharing formula is taking a little more of the burden. Federal, we think that's basically going to be flat between the two systems over the next few years. The last thing I want to mention before I hand this off to Farrell is just the issues of tax restructuring and some of the issues that are out there. Council's into that right now with Airbnb. There are changes in technology that is changing the way people purchase products and the way they do things. So this is an example that we've been talking about for a few years. The state took over wireless or telecommunications and cable television-type revenue. Before, there was a whole bunch of different rates across all the cities, so the state took it over and had a uniform rate and they promised that it would be revenue neutral. So you can see, what's happened over time is the wireless households have increased, people do not have as many landlines. Well, the state has never adjusted for that change in technology use. And that green line just shows the change from year to year in what we're losing in revenue. If this revenue was held to what, being cost neutral or revenue neutral, we'd have $6.1 million more than what we have today. So the only point that I'm trying to make with this last one is, well, the blue line represents what the sales tax is calculated on, actual products. The green line, we do not tax services. And I'm not suggesting we do or don't. My point is, there's been a lot of studies that say that you could maybe put services into the sales tax calculation, do it in a revenue-neutral way where maybe you could even get rid of B-pole. But, you know, e-cigarettes, those things aren't taxed right now from the cigarette tax. As technology changes, I think local governments, state governments are going to have to look at the way that we tax things and is it evolving with the technology? I was reading an article this weekend that in 30 years, they think there'd be more electric cars. Well, if that happens, there wouldn't be a gasoline tax, you know, to do that. So how do you take care of the roads and things as technology changes? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Farrell and he's going to kind of get into our actual forecast.
Thank you very much, David Farrell. We're glad to have you.
We're going to go right into our expenditure drivers and the assumptions that we made. Both the city and the schools are using these assumptions, the same assumptions for both city and the schools. So during the forecast period, we're projecting a 2% increase each year for increases of salaries for employees, 2% increase for inflation each year, and 2.5% increase in healthcare costs beginning in FY 2018-19. The city and schools have differing VRS, the Virginia Retirement System rate assumptions. The school expenditure, capital expenditures are flat for 2017-18 and increase again starting in 2018-19. The city CIP operating budget impacts other commitments include the ongoing operational costs associated with the opening of the Housing Resource Center, the staffing of the Burton Station, fire EMS station, continuation of the four-year phase-in of the body camera program, the full city funding of the 12 grant-funded firefighter positions, and 10 additional police officers added each year for a total of 50 through FY 2021. Some of these items are funded by the 30-cent increase in personal property tax for public safety. Debt for each of the five years include allocated but unissued debt and the requirements of the approved CIP. Both the city and schools, for both the city and the schools, our presentation includes a summary of the general fund for the city and the schools' operating fund for the schools, with both funds being combined to show a total deficit in each year of the forecast. And we'll show that to you a little later. This presentation will also include sensitivity analyses, how the change in one variable infects the forecast. The general fund forecast is considerably more optimistic, as David had indicated earlier, than in the prior years, mainly due to the recovery of the real estate, the personal property, and the consumer-related revenues. Last year's five-year forecast included a $15 million deficit in the first year and an $18.5 million deficit in the final year of the forecast. Last year's forecast also did not include a pay increase for employees. Obviously, the higher level of uncertainty exists in the future years of the forecast. The key to the forecast is based on the underlying assumptions. If assumptions change, the surplus or deficit changes as well. The following slides will provide the sensitivity analysis of the key variables. Let me go back one. The general fund forecast is, currently, the forecast projects an increase of 2% in the VRS rate in FY 2018-19 and another 2% increase in FY 2021. If this rate were to increase by 1% in 2018-19 and another 1% in 2021, the projected deficit in 2018-19 will reduce by $2.6 million and the FY 21-22 deficit by $5.6 million. As previously mentioned, the city's not assuming an increase in healthcare rates for next year. However, for the forecasted period, healthcare is projected to increase 2.5% each year beginning in 2018-19. If health insurance rates increase by 5% beginning in 2018-19 as compared to 2.5% increase as the baseline forecast, the city's deficit is expected to grow by almost $1 million in FY 18-19 and about $4 million in 21-22. Looking forward, the baseline estimated that the inflation rate would be 2%. If inflation were to grow by 3%, the city's deficit would increase by $2 million in FY 17-18 and $11 million by 21-22. Overall, the real estate forecast is forecasted to increase from 2017-18 to FY 21-22 at an annual rate of 3%. If the city experiences an additional 1% increase in real estate revenues over the five years, the baseline budget for FY 21-22 will increase by $21 million over the original forecast period and eliminate the projected deficit by 21-22. In addition, the schools would receive 34.11% of the increase or approximately $1.8 million We'll go right into the schools' baseline and the sensitivity analysis. Our baseline forecast, the school operating budget provides the day-to-day operations and maintenance of the school division. Since more than 87% of the total fiscal year for '16-'17 budget is appropriated for the school operating fund, this five-year forecast focuses on providing details about that fund. Under our revenues assumptions, the state sales, shared sales tax and other revenue is expected to increase by 1% in FY 2017-18 and increasing by 2% in FY 2018-19 and 2019-20 and 3% in 2021 and 21-22. Local revenue, the local revenue sharing formula is increasing by approximately 2.4% in FY 2017-18, primarily as a result of the real estate and personal property and consumer-driven revenue growth, and is expected to increase by 1.9% each of the forecast years remaining. Our federal revenues are likely to decline by about 12, from $12.5 million to $12.2 million for 2017-18 and then remain flat throughout the rest of the forecast period. And that reduction is primarily related to a slight decrease in the number of student and families impacted, federally impacted students and families. Our other resources, which we're using here to be the one-time school reserve or reversion funds, will be building a $5 million one-time, using those one-time funds each year of the forecast period. Also, the sandwich tax increment financing, the TIF funds of approximately $400,000 will be diverted to the school operating fund for the first two years of the forecast period. Our expenditure assumptions, as David indicated to you earlier, the city and the schools are using the same assumptions for the employee salary increases in our inflation and healthcare costs. However, we do use a different assumption regarding the Virginia Retirement System or the VRS rate. The VRS rate for schools of 14.66%, which is currently the rate, is expected to climb by 1.66% to 16.32% for FY 2017-18 and then remain flat throughout the rest of the forecast period. This increase is the single largest increase in our forecast and equates to an additional $10.3 million cost increase. The capital outlay expenditures for schools are expected to remain flat from FY '16-'17 and '17-18 and then increase each of the next three years to purchase additional replacement school buses. 10 buses in the third year, 10 buses in the fourth year, and 10, and five buses in the fifth year. Utilizing the revenue and expenditure assumptions that I've just shared with you, you can see the projected deficit each year and note that the VRS increase make up more than half the deficits every year except for two years in the forecast. Virginia Beach is one of only a handful of public school divisions in Virginia without full-day kindergarten. Virginia Beach City Public Schools currently offers full-day kindergarten in 12 Title I schools. All other elementary schools in the division have a half-day kindergarten program and each elementary school offers at least one extended-day kindergarten program, or we call them EDK classes. The EDK program offers identified students an extra half-day of instructional time and support in the areas of reading, writing, and math. The school board has long, long wanted to implement full-day kindergarten across the division, but the projected costs have been prohibitive. Recent estimates for implementation total about $11.2 million without factoring in the budget impacts of capital outlay requirements if we had to have some additional mobile classroom units. The table and the chart illustrates the variance between the projected baseline deficit and the adjusted shortfall from a five-year phased-in implementation of full-day kindergarten for all eligible VBCPs students. David shared with you in the city's sensitivity analysis, if we increase the healthcare rate by 5% instead of the 2.5% that's in the baseline forecast, the schools' operating budget deficit would grow by nearly $6.7 million. And you can see in the table the difference between the baseline and that additional 5% in future years of the forecast period. This chart combines both the city and the schools' revenue and expenditures and shows the surplus or deficits for each year. When combined, the schools' total deficit, the total deficit for the schools and the city increases from FY 2017-18 at $16.3 million to $36.7 million in 2021 and eventually declines to $33 million in 21-22. We'll share with you right now just some closing thoughts. Moving towards the sustainable forecast, this forecast does not project the higher deficits as in the past forecast. During the recession, the combined deficits for the city and the schools at times were over $100 million. During that time, both the city and the schools have trimmed and are eliminated programs and positions. In addition, revenue was increased for specific priorities like the 30-cent personal property revenue dedicated to public safety. While the forecast is not sustainable based on current assumptions over the five-year planning horizon, the impact of some of the key drivers discussed in the sensitivity analysis of the forecast could reduce or increase future deficits. Monitoring the underlying assumptions over the forecast period will help determine the sustainability of the current budget. The state budget, with the state not meeting its budget projections at the end of this past fiscal year, the city will need to monitor how the second year of the state biennial impacts the local budget as well as future budgets. That was one of the reasons that, for the schools, we're only projecting a 1% increase next year, which is the second year of the biennial, the state's biennial budget. Several areas of Several areas of our budget are particularly vulnerable to change in the state budget. Education, constitutional officers, the Department of Human Services and transportation, including the maintenance of roads. This funding is critical in maintaining the efficient and safe transportation network. Is there a recession on the horizon? Unfortunately, recessions happen on a somewhat frequent basis. The financial impact on families, businesses and government can range from mild to severe, especially since the country has just come out of what has been described as the Great Recession. It has been over seven years since that recession occurred. History would indicate that a recession would most likely occur during the five-year forecast planning horizon. The projection of this forecast leaned more toward being conservative, especially consumer-driven revenues, in the out-years with mainly the possibility of a recession in the planning period. Favorable interest rate environment and debt service interest rates have been favorable borrowing rates for a long time. The most recent bond sale have some of the lowest rates in history of the city. The Federal Reserve Bank has kept interest rates low for years. This has created a very favorable environment for borrowing with exceptionally low rates for the cities with the AAA bond rating like Virginia Beach. There is a long-term interest rate financial advantage of the city issuing debt during this favorable interest rate environment. Any additional debt beyond the amount allocated via the charter bond calculation is recommended to have a dedicated revenue source. Without a dedicated revenue source, the surplus deficits shown in the forecast will be negatively impacted and require reduced services and other expenditures reduced. Tax restructuring, as the technological and consumer spending change, localities and the General Assembly need to work together to determine a fair and equitable tax structure. The goal would be to ensure that businesses are created similarly for products and services they deliver. The citizens would benefit from consistent tax application. In addition, some of the proposals have shown the possibility of additional jobs being created depending on the tax restructuring involved. New and expansion of programs and services, the city and the school board should consider any new programs and expansion of services with an accompanying dedicated revenue source or reallocate funding from existing programs or services. And with that, David and I are available for any questions or any comments.
Thank you very much. I know Jim Wood has a question.
I've actually had three questions, Mr. Mayor. First, we talked about the ADR versus occupancy rate and changes there. It's kind of unclear, is that more or less net money into the economy? It looks like the supply and demand curve from Econ 101 and that was...
Yeah, it's probably the double axes. And it's something that Brad mentioned at his State of the Tourism event that he had a week or two ago. We are getting more hotel tax, so there is more money coming into the economy. The point of that graph is it's being driven by the ADR right now. And there's opportunity with the amount of rooms that are available, and that's what that lower graph was showing. And I think that's what Brad's trying to address. So if we get ADR, plus we get more rooms being rented, you're going to have even better hotel tax in the 4.6%.
All right, then, under the health insurance increase of 2.5%, is that anticipated to be only on the city side or the employee side or what? I'm sorry, employer versus employee.
That's city and schools.
I'm sorry, is it on the employer or employee?
Just the employer. Right now, we're talking about employer cost. It's undetermined what we would have to do with employees at this time. However, this forecast does not increase employee rates in the first year of the forecast, but it's undetermined what we will have to do in the outer years.
And then following along on that, if I could, with the insurance aspect of it, has anybody looked, and I know it's only been a week, but the impact of the potential repeal of all or part of the Affordable Care Act and what that impact would be on...
Obviously, we have not. We haven't. There would be a lot of different kind of speculation about how that would be amended, adjusted. We just don't know. We have some good healthcare consultants that we can draw on that are fairly knowledgeable of the Affordable Care Act, so when we get more specifics, we can do more of analysis. But no, we haven't attempted to do that yet.
Okay, and then the final question I have is on the full-day kindergarten piece. What you have in here, does that anticipate starting it all at once or phased in over time or...
This forecast would have it phasing in over the five years. It's going to be a bit complicated because when it's fully implemented, it means that we can't use the federal dollars of Title I for any kindergartens because you can't supplant those federal funds with, you can't use those funds for the same thing that's being done throughout the division. So we will have to come up with a complicated phase-in process to do that. So this would be phasing it in, not all at one time.
And how many schools would you do per year?
Well, right now, we have full-day kindergarten in 12 of, I guess, the, I think it's 58, 54 elementary schools, so...
So you just do another 12 a year, roughly? Okay.
Other questions? John?
On slide five, you know, if you go back and look at the 2016 annual report that Dr. Cook did, he talked about the biggest issue wasn't unemployment but underemployment. I think that's EC6, I think, is the subcategory. I think we need to include that slot. I'd like to know what that is. I think that would be important to understand because that gets to what people are making versus being employed. When you talked about on slide six and then I think, and then, excuse me, slide 12 and slide 13, if I remember correct, on slide 13, that's per capita, correct? That's per capita expenditure, if I remember correct?
This is the actual dollars of the budget.
Oh, the actual dollars. Well, if you go back and look, I think it was up like 83 million. I didn't see dollars and millions on the slide, but maybe I missed it. But I do want to point out that in a time that the budget didn't go up much, that families' incomes on slide 12 went down $4,864 in real terms. So while maybe on the city side, and I realize citizens get those benefits, they transferred wealth from the private sector to the public sector to make that happen. I just think that's a point that got glossed over pretty quickly. Now, back to the health thing. I went back and looked at both the CBO, they have their report out. You have the National Health Institute has their report out. The Business National Journal has their report out, and they're forecasting 5% per year health cost, and that is considered to be somewhat risky. So I think that if we're really going to be honest with the central tendency of forecast, the sensitivity analysis isn't 5. The sensitivity analysis optimistically would be 2.5. So I think we really have to think that 5% is the least that we are going to see in the marketplace. So I think when people look at that, I think they need to realize that that is a very optimistic, which no other forecast I could find, researching could find. Now, getting back to the chart about military families and percentages of income, that was, I forget which slide that was, it was early on in your presentation. Oh, slide nine. Is that DEA statistics for people who actually work at our bases?
This is the number of jobs in Virginia Beach, in the earnings in Virginia Beach, so it's people that are at the bases in Virginia Beach.
The reason why I think this is important because you go back to 69, I know Barbara and many of us were here in 69, the private sector market in Virginia Beach was significantly smaller than the 141,000-plus it is today. So if you looked at that from a point of view of all the people that live here but work elsewhere, I think you would get a different graph. But I think unless people understand that that's just the basis and if you counter that relative to the private sector number of jobs, that growth, you would see why that's the case. But I think you could get a distorted look not knowing all the background of that slide. You could easily draw the wrong conclusions. I think you need to at least qualify what that's for. Be helpful. On the part about the, I noticed in the past, we've always had in the five-year forecast demographic information. One of the big pieces, as you may recall, in the five-year forecast for the region was the rise of single-earner households and also the income distribution of those households. And I think we often, Mr. Mayor, have a discussion about ability to pay. And I think without having some appreciation for what that demographic picture which had been in the past five-year forecast, it's hard to understand the fiscal capacity of closing that deficit that you project and how you would collect that and what it would mean to people. Because we have 10,000 people in the nation turning 65 every day for the next 19 years. That's a pretty significant number and that has implications. So I think without demographic information, it's hard to put this in context. And we used to get things like number of people on social security, number of people on free and school lunch for things in the five-year forecast. I know they're no longer in there. Once again, it's hard to give a flavor to the context of all these numbers without seeing how they translate back to the individuals that live here. And they will be that time was an issue. I know we were dealing with people with flooded homes and stuff and that probably had an impact on what we could do. But getting back to this full-day kindergarten, nowhere in the analysis do we talk about what is the impact on the economy of basically putting out of work the private sector providers who today are providing private kindergarten care? And what is the business case or the risk case? Are those kids more at risk, less at risk? But there is an implication to the community as we transition and displace private providers. Why is that a public policy outcome that's a good one or not? I not know what the answer is, but it's not free. There's a choice. We are displacing current providers and there's an economic consequence of that. And I'm not sure how that works through your analysis, but I do think it should be part of the public discussion. On the sensitivity analysis that you did on the increase, would it be fair to say that if on slide 32, you said that if inflation went up a percent, the deficit increased? But likewise, you often, when inflation increases, but not always, real estate increases at the same time, not always. So I don't know if I should take the 3 million plus that we gain on real estate going up an extra percent on slide 33 in your economic model, if you have one. This might just be a spreadsheet sensitivity versus actually a model. Would that come off the $4 million deficit on slide 32 for a net deficit of only a million? I'm having a hard time understanding how the sensitivity analysis interplay across your graphs.
What we were trying to do is we always kept the baseline the same and just changed one variable to just show how that one variable changes something. So you're right, there are interrelationships, but you know, to keep it and just show how the math changes, we would do one variable at a time.
And the last comment I'll make, because I know I could make a number of them, is when we don't see the trustee accounts in this budget, because this is just general funds, we have a number of enterprise funds, also those have forecasts. We all know what the water sewer bill does to all of us because we all hear a lot about it. So we're not seeing what that impact is on families here. We don't see that. And we don't see the stormwater management. So I think when we don't get a total picture look, because some of those trustee funds actually have available cash assets, some of those trustee accounts actually have surpluses in them, and this council has the ability to redistribute those surpluses because they're self-imposed. So we don't see the full spectrum of opportunities that we have to close the gap that we see in this book. And lastly, in the past, we've always talked about, had big charts about debt capacity and things that were out there that were looming. I think all of us realistically know, and I've talked with the mayor about this, we got some big gaps on school modernization. We got some big gaps a lot of places, and I think we think we're going to close those without bonded debt. We're fooling ourselves because we're not. And we're going to figure out how to fund that, and I've talked to the mayor about that as well. And so I just think that that would still be a good thing for us to know, that backlog. And then the general revenues for tax increases and that general revenue for real estate is the 1.8 cents that we use to establish, not trustee account, but a dedicated source of revenue for light rail, is that in that real estate revenue projection?
This was just the general fund. So we did the general fund and school operating fund. You're talking about 75% or so of it. So the multimodal fund was not included in this analysis.
Would that mean that the 2 cents that we adopted going back in time, and I guess it'd be my last closing point, three budgets back when the school board asked for a 6-cent real estate tax increase? I know everybody will remember that. And at the closing minutes before the vote, it went from 6 to 4 and 2 for transportation. Is the 2 cents for transportation built in or is it also excluded from your general revenue projection?
That is in the multimodal fund as well. So what we did when we created the multimodal fund is we tried to put all the like expenditures in that fund. So mass transit, for example, the monies being transferred from the general fund to the multimodal fund. That 2 cent, Mr. Moss, that you're talking about is still being totally used for the purposes that it was originally intended. Line of duty came off first and the remaining amount went to the roadway program. That is coming into the multimodal fund and going to the CIP for the same purpose.
So going back, this is why I'm asking, these are important because those are dollars that are now in play. They are. So when we look at the deficit, if we don't look at that, we don't really see the full ability for the council to address the school gap without having to put a burden on, because we have revenues that we put aside for a project we're no longer going to pursue. And so those dollars now are back in play. And I'm just saying, when we don't see that full picture, we don't see our full ability to meet our operational commitments, and I just think that's important. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? We've got a lineup. Yes, Amelia?
Just quickly, to do the creation of human services at 5%, a cut, is that straight through for all of those years or is going to change, do you think?
We assumed it more for the first year and then going flat in the second year of the forecast and then just increasing on the city side about 1% a year. But they have been asked at the state level to have a 5% cut. Now, whether they implement it, we won't know at this point, but at least it's being targeted for that.
Okay, and the second one was to do with the private sector jobs where you said it'll take two for one military job. We're also working within the city of trying to bring back in some way the veterans who still get military monies and van balance. How does that play into this?
Well, I think that's an interesting point. That table you're talking about, we really got from the Old Dominion State of the Region. They were just making a point that for every two, for every military job, you have to replace it to private. But your point's valid. I mean, if we get one of those veterans to stay locally, sometimes they go to wherever they're originally from, that would help.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Beverly?
While Mr. Moss pointed out that we might consider how many private sector jobs might be lost if we implement full-day kindergarten, I also want you to consider, just because I feel I'm really, really, really into this, and I want you to consider, how many of our families in our city would also benefit economically with full-day kindergarten? And also, how that will impact our students once they hit first grade? Because once we control all of the curriculum in kindergarten, it will benefit our first grade students a whole lot. And I just, I want you to understand that as well. I mean, I get your point, but there will also be many, many, many thousands of families that will be economically helped out as well.
Good points on both sides. Good points on both sides. Other questions or comments? Well, folks...
Mr. Chairman, I think every year, it's been a whole lot worse than this. So I'm optimistic. But I will say even every year, we always walk away with the attitude, we're going to get through it, and we have. So I look forward to working with you in the upcoming budget, and thank you all very much. Thank you all for being over here.